Pretty wonderful.
DJ, how's it going?
Yeah, how are you?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here for our regularly scheduled briefing. We have many people in the audience who've just come to watch the earth-shattering council briefing topic this morn— no, I'm just kidding. They're here for Get Engaged. My name is Bruce Harrell, president of the council. We are joined by councilmember Sawant, councilmembers Juarez, Pacheco, Bagshaw, and Gonzalez. And if there's no objection, the minutes of the October 7th, 2019 meeting will be approved. No objection, the minutes are being approved. Let's see the order with which we had sort of described things. We'll go through the preview of today's full council actions after we address the Get Engaged members. I'll dispense of the president's report at this point and say a few comments when we do committee reports. Now, councilmember Sawant, I know you have a conflict, so do you want me to do this and then do your— okay.
That's fine, I'll just hand my—
Okay, oh, very good. Okay, so let me pass something out for the council first. This is a description of these extremely talented Get Engaged members, and what we're trying to do for efficiency's sake are sort of—the represents all—I shouldn't say all of the commissions, but the lion's share of the commissions where we had the Get Engaged members. Instead of doing them one at a time, we'll address them on the full council this afternoon. And you have a description of their backgrounds and sort of some cheat notes that my staff put together, so that's the document there. And what I said before the cameras returned on us, so we'd like to get to know you a little bit, and because we have you, and I think—it's an alphabetical order, I think it's— well, it's the order with which you're presented on the voting agenda this afternoon. You don't have a copy of this document, so if you would like to just introduce yourself and talk about the commission you're going to serve, if you want to say anything else about yourself, that's fine. And let's see who we have here. So I believe we have 24 appointees. I don't know if all 24 are here or not, but how would you like to proceed? Just—anyway you want.
Yeah, we can go in the order. So we have Joseph Colleen. Okay.
Just pass the microphone to him, yeah.
Hi, my name's Joseph Gunner Colleen. I'm going to be on the Seattle Bicycle Advisory Board. I am a born and raised Seattleite. I work at the Urban Indian Health Institute where I work on chronic disease prevention and work in Indian country, and I'm really excited for this opportunity.
Excellent.
Great, we have Amanda Sandoval next.
And Amanda, before you begin, I forgot one little caveat. There could be a question or two from some of you from the council. That is part of the process, and so we're kind, we're gentle, but if any of my colleagues have questions of you, that sometimes happens when we do the committee work. So colleagues, let's cross-examine them. All right.
Uh, just Dan.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Amanda Sandoval. I am a public policy coordinator at the Mockingbird Society, and I'm on the Immigrant Refugee Commission. Very excited to be here.
Next, we have Eliza Ramsey.
Hi, Eliza Ramsey. Like Gunner, I work at the Urban Indian Health Institute and particularly grateful to be here on Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm proud to be appointed to the Board of Parks Commissioners as I believe that public spaces and public services like recreation opportunities are fundamental to building healthy and strong communities.
Wonderful. In fact, that's what I sort of was trying to get at, is why did you all migrate to that particular board? And Eliza hit it on the head. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Brian Stromer.
This is like hot potato. I'm Brian Stromer. I am at Microsoft Radio Marketing, and I'm going to be on the Seattle Transit Advisory Board. I'm super excited because I think transit equals opportunity.
Hmm, very good.
Gregory Katron.
Hi, good morning. My name is Greg Katron. I'm a practicing architect with Methune in Seattle, and I'm also a felt textile artist based here as well. I'm very excited to be given the opportunity to serve on the Seattle Center Advisory Commission, not only as a frequent user of our beloved institution, but also as an architect. I'm excited to bring experience in urban design and community outreach to the commission. So thank you.
Very much.
Next, we have Sheila Guybee.
Hi, I'm Sheila Guybee, really close. I am originally from Utah, moved to Seattle about five years ago, but consider this my home. I do marketing for T-Mobile, and I'm on the Seattle Arts Commission. Really excited to make sure that everyone feels like an artist and feels like they're a part of this community, because I feel like a lot of people have that within them.
Thank you, Sheila.
Next, we have Nathaniel Higby.
Straight in the back.
My name is Nate Higby. I work at Virginia Mason Medical Center, and I'll be serving on the LPTQ Committee. One of the reasons why I'm really excited about this is working at a hospital. I see a lot of care gaps that we have for our LPTQ population, so I'm really excited to be having the opportunity to work on that this year.
Thanks, Nate.
Next, we have Adriana Lasso-Harrier.
My name is Adriana Lasso-Harrier. I'm the Communications Manager at the Statewide Poverty Action Network, and I'm very much looking forward to working on the Seattle Women's Commission and working alongside the Women of Seattle for Gender Equity.
Next, we have Gloria Ma.
Hi, I'm Gloria Ma. I will be serving on the Design Review Board. I believe design is very important for our community and for our city, so I'm really excited to be part of this board. I'm currently a project designer at Weber Thompson, and I have a background in architecture. Thank you.
Before you go to the next one, I'd like to address my first mistake of the day of the week. Did the presenters— Michael, did any of you want to come up and introduce? Did we have presenters at the table that I was supposed to invite here?
That's all one lady says.
I get five mistakes a week. It's just Monday, I got four more to go, so—
So good.
So please come forward and—
You were doing a good job.
Well—
You just roll with it, yeah.
And we stopped at—
Gloria.
Gloria Ma at Weber Thompson. So let's stop there, and Justin, just hold tight. And maybe you all could talk about the apparent phenomenal job you did at recruiting the Get Engaged, and talk maybe a little bit for the viewing public, a little bit about the Get Engaged and introductions, please.
Is this on?
Uh, yes.
Good, cool. So I'm Kyla Blair, Director of External Affairs and Outreach for Mayor Durkin. She is very excited to put this cohort forward today. Our staff did a lot of work, did a lot of interviews, worked with the Y pretty closely to do a lot of the outreach, so we're excited to be here. I'm actually going to just turn over to Ari to give an overview of the process that folks went through.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ari Einbinder. I am the Get Engaged Program Coordinator for the Accelerator YMCA. The Accelerator YMCA is thrilled to be partnering with the city again this year and leading the Get Engaged program. For those who may not be familiar, who may be listening, Get Engaged is designed to give seats on local city boards and commissions to those 18 to 29, presenting the opportunity to get younger voices, younger people to have a voice and to literally have a seat at the table. And as others have said, after a lot of consideration, we had over 75 applications this year, which is really, really great. It was also a little bit daunting to narrow down the choices, because really everyone was such a strong applicant. But after carefully reviewing all the applications and conducting interviews, we're really, really proud of our 2019-2020 Get Engaged cohort. Our cohort really represents a variety of backgrounds and life experiences, ranging from social services and nonprofits to urban planning to continued education. There are individuals who are passionate about an array of issues, including working to improve education, social justice, and protecting the environment. This cohort also represents the richness of our community's diversity, and we're excited to have members from every single Seattle district represented on these boards and commissions. Also, before I lose the mic, I do want to say a thank you to everyone who helped make this possible, including the liaisons participating, the liaisons from both the boards and from the mayor's office. I would also personally really like to thank Tal Madsen, who really helped me out a lot and fielded 1,000 emails from me. But in general, my thanks to everyone who helped move this process along and get us to this point. I'm really looking forward to an amazing year and learning with everyone here.
Thanks, Ari, Kyla. Any questions of the process, or these two fine people? Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you. We know how important this program is. I'm delighted that all of you are here. Can you tell me, when did this get started? Because I know that it's grown over the last 10 years, but do you know the first year we did this?
I believe it was 2001, if I'm not mistaken.
So to those of you who have already spoken, thank you for this, but I want to say on the Parks Commission, this was a big deal about 10 years ago, and I was chairing parks at the time. And there was a conflict between how they were choosing somebody on the board. There was, you know, various people that were appointed to the commission, and then they were voting for, I believe, their seventh member. And it got to be a nasty conflict, and it was at that point where I said, why don't you get a Get Engaged person on it? You know, let's do the three and the three that the mayor and the council would appoint. But again, the first Get Engaged person just transformed the entire board. So I just want you to know that this is not an exercise in just sort of, you know, something nice to do. You really will have a major impact. So thank you.
Very good. Thanks for those comments, Councilmember Bagshaw. Any other closing words? And thanks for your patience. I just didn't look at the notes. I was too anxious to meet our Get Engaged. Okay, so with that, please stay at the table. And again, we may ask you some questions, but for the first eight or nine, that was very nice. And it's, again, free—you can talk about your background even more than just, I work here. You could talk about your passion and any career goals or any of that stuff. So we try to keep it somewhat informal to try to get to know you, and we will be voting on your packages this afternoon. Okay.
Great. Next, we have Justin Pangeneben.
Hi, my name is Justin Pangeneben. I'm originally from the San Francisco Bay Area, lived in Seattle for about five years now. I currently work as a urban designer and planner at Via Architecture, and I'm excited to be joining the Design Review Board with the East District. And I'm just really excited to be helping shape places that are a source of community pride.
Okay.
Next, we have Olivia Price.
It's okay to shout what districts you're from, too, by the way. You've got to know. There better be at least two of you from District 2.
I'm Olivia, and I just got my voice back today, so I apologize if it cracks, but I currently work at Village Reach, a global health nonprofit, and I studied public health at the University of Washington. And I will be on the Pioneer Square Preservation Board. And I grew up in Ballard, so I'm really interested in preserving the historic character of our city, but also making sure that it's representative of and accessible to all.
Very good.
Next, we have Lucas Whitezell.
Oh, Michael, I got it. Hi, everyone. My name is Lucas Whitezell. I'm a proud constituent of District 3. Structural engineer by training, I grew up in Olympia, Washington, went to UW for college, went to Berkeley for my masters, and then eventually moved back here to practice at a company called AARP. Huge Sounders fan, love Seattle. I've been involved in some community outreach around the region. I'm doing a program called Mentor U to help mentor high school students get prepared for college. Done a lot of work, phone banking and door-to-door canvassing for initiatives and candidates both locally and nationally. So I'd say that's definitely a passion that I hold. And I see the opportunity to work on the commission—sorry, I should say—the Seattle Design Commission as a perfect way to marry my talents and my passion for infrastructure and for design with my passions for community engagement. So I'm really excited to work on the commission. Hopefully, as a member of the Seattle Design Commission, I can help hear design ideas that are going to impact the city and do my part to make sure that they take into account every single person who they're going to touch and try to make sure that they improve the city for everybody.
Thank you, Lucas. Very good.
Next, we have Hannah Wilson.
Hi, my name is Hannah Wilson. I'm originally from the San Francisco Bay Area, and I just graduated from the University of Washington with a degree in environmental science. I'm really passionate about environmental justice issues and disability justice issues just because I'm a hard-of-hearing person, so I will be joining the Seattle Commission for People with Disabilities. And my goal is to bring an intersectional lens to the way we address these issues, including accessibility, inclusion, and bringing a bigger community here at Seattle.
Thank you, Hannah.
Next, we have Ryan LaHiri Galaway-Watt.
Hi, good morning. My name's Ryan Watt, and I'm a senior analyst at Apt Associates, which is a research and technical assistance firm. I do work mostly for the US Department of Housing and Urban Development on issues of housing homelessness. And here in Seattle, I also work in direct service as a meal coordinator at Teen Feed, which is a low-barrier meal program in the U District for youth experiencing homelessness. And Amanda, I have a Mockingbird pin on—which is—Mockingbird is also a terrific organization. I'm really excited to be able to join the Planning Commission because I think the voices of those experiencing homelessness, and especially youth experiencing homelessness, are not typically well-represented in those spaces. So I'm excited to see what we can do with respect to planning for those folks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sharif Mahfouz.
Hi, my name is—sorry, a little sick. My name is Sharif Mahfouz, and I am a software engineer at Physio. I live in Lower Queen Anne, also work in Lower Queen Anne, so very proud District 7. I am selected to serve on the Community Involvement Commission, and I'm very excited to serve on the Community Involvement Commission because I was born in New York City, family of two immigrants, and I know how structures and processes can prevent and disenfranchise people from being involved in their government. And also, after having lived in the South for a period of time, I'm very passionate to see that those people are represented by their government. So I hope my lived experience, the lived experiences of the people around me, and my neighbors here in Seattle can help inform me on how to serve that commission. But I also hope that I have the humility to know that I don't have the answers to all the problems we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharif.
Next is Felicia Turner-Murphy.
My name is Felicia Turner-Murphy. I'm in District 1. I'm from Ohio originally, grew up in Columbus, got a BA in psych at Cleveland State University, and then my masters in social work down at University of Kentucky. I currently work as a psychotherapist slash case manager at Downtown Emergency Service Center, and I'm also a trainer for mental health and equity for staff. I am going to be on the Seattle Renters Commission. I'm a huge advocate for systems change. I don't really see a point of working in a system that's broken, so why not change it? And especially with the clients that I serve, a lot of them are the most vulnerable homeless with mental health and substance use. So working on the Seattle's Renter Commission, I'm really excited to make some structural impact on the people that I serve every day.
Thank you, Felicia.
Next is Jayden Zwick.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jayden Zwick, and I was born in Seattle, raised proudly in Federal Way, and I now live in Columbia City. And I love my neighborhood, and I love my community, and community is something that's really important to me. And so I am currently the program coordinator for a community-based leadership scholarship called Act 6. And in that role, I have the chance to do a lot of leadership development with young people. And for me, I think that developing leadership is so, so, so central to the way that we're able to make social change for our communities. And so I really believe in leadership that is community-oriented, that is equity-based, and that also is anti-racist. And so for me, I get to serve on the Human Rights Commission, and I'm really excited to kind of bring my passion and understanding of the fact that all of us are connected in so many ways, and none of us are liberated until all of us are liberated. And so being on the commission, I think, is just going to be a great place for me to be able to learn and kind of share my experiences and passion and curiosity with that team. So thank you so much.
That's District 2 all day right there. That's District 2. Thank you, Jayden.
Thank you.
Next, Catherine Crimmens.
Hi, I'm Katie Crimmens. I'm originally from Boston. I've been in Seattle for about three years now, and I live on First Hill. I have worked in a variety of sectors. I've worked for the city of Boston, for Amazon, and now for the YMCA of Greater Seattle. So I'm really excited to be part of this program and help support the Y in a new way. And I've worked in digital my whole career, and I'm serving on the Community Technology Advisory Board. I think technology is really powerful. It can be a great equalizer and give people access to resources and tools they normally wouldn't have just by geographic location or other factors, but it's also powerful in negative ways. And so I think the commission is really critical to make sure that people have access to the right resources and that they're being—that technology's being used appropriately.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Neeti Johnson.
Hi, my name is Neeti Johnson. I will be on the Urban Forestry Commission. I'm really excited to be working on issues of environmental justice, climate resilience, and overall livability of the city. I live in Beacon Hill and work in Mount Baker at Treehouse, which actually has nothing to do with trees. And I, so far, have been able to sit on—sit in on a couple of Urban Forestry Commission meetings where I really learned a lot and was able to see how some of my technical experience in urban forestry can be applied, so I'm really looking forward to learning more.
District 2. No, they're not. No, that's just 2. Thank you very much.
Is there—okay, I know. AD.
Next, we have Ian McLeod. Okay, we'll go to Emily Meltzer.
Hi, I'm Emily Meltzer. I'm the Director of Development and Communications at Accelerator Y, so the social services part of the Y of Greater Seattle. I'll be serving on the Pedestrian Advisory Board, and I live in Rainier Beach, and I've lived in Seattle for a little over seven years. I'm really excited about the Pedestrian Advisory Board because I think accessible sidewalks and safe routes to school and work are absolutely crucial to building a sustainable city.
Thank you, Emily. I think that concludes our list.
All right.
Well, let's give these—
Well done, everybody.
No. And Ari, will you make it clear to my colleagues that I have nothing to do with folks coming from District 2? We look at the applications. So I would like to say a few words, and many of you can grab the mic and speak back if you'd like, and that is, in all seriousness, the reason I am in a good mood this morning is because Seattle is not dying, that you demonstrate that people are willing to put their skin in the game and put their time and resources and their expertise into improving the lives of others, not your own life. And by virtue of the talent we have running this city, that there would be—there would be—there's a lot of people loved that narrative about how bad we're doing. We are a growing city. Many of you moved here within the most recent years, and we have our pain points. We have our issues we're trying to work through, but it's not because of a lack of talent or a lack of commitment or even a lack of intellect. Big cities in our country right now are struggling with some very challenging issues, and the Get Engaged is sort of the lifeblood of where we're trying to go. So I'm always excited when I see this kind of talent, not criticized, but put the skin in the game. So thank you very much for serving on these very important commissions, and so I look forward to supporting all of you. There's 21, I think, we brought today, 21. So I'm only voting for 18, 3, just didn't make the cut. No, I'm just kidding. A lot of talent, and I can't wait to vote this afternoon for you. Any other comments from my colleagues before we go to our today's council actions? I bet you if I wait long enough, someone's going to say something. Everybody good? Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay for our brief, and we're going to go over our business for today. Thank you, Ari. Appreciate it very much. Okay, I'm going to do two things. I'm going to talk about something that's on the IRC this afternoon, and then present councilmember Sawant's committee report. What's on the IRC for today, which will be up for vote next week, is a resolution approving referendum 88, which supports I-1000. And the reason we think this is critical is not only to show our strong support for I-1000, but to also make it clear how people are to vote on 88. Some people don't know if they should go yes or no on 88, and on 88, it's a yes, we approve it, because it affirms I-1000, and we don't want any confusion on that, and we certainly want Seattle to help lead the way in this effort. So that'll be on the IRC for vote next Monday, and I look forward to that next Monday. I will move to councilmember Sawant's committee report. She had a conflict and wanted me to read that. Says, "Councilmember Sawant requested I read the report of the Human Services Equitable Development and Renters Rights Committee," because she is at the Indigenous Peoples' Day March. "There are no items on today's city council agenda from the Human Services Equitable Development and Renters Rights Committee. The next meeting of the committee is scheduled for a special time this Thursday, October 17th, at 5:00 PM. At that time, we will hold the legally required public hearing into her office's legislation to expand options to build tiny house villages in Seattle." So that's Thursday, October 17th. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, councilmember Juarez, you have the floor.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So first of all—
Whoa, you okay?
Sorry.
I haven't even started yet before you give your day. Let me get in that stand.
No, exactly, dang. Now that we've had our show here from our president, I know it's a hard act to follow, there are no items from the Civic Development, Public Asset, and Native Communities items on today's calendar or agenda. And again, Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. As an enrolled member of the Blackfeet Nation, I have the pleasure of being Indigenous every day, so that's nice. I want to thank councilmember Herbold for reading the proclamation today. Thank you, councilmember Herbold. And today, I am wearing my Lummi Nation pin, so the Lummies are watching, so today I'm Lummi. That's it.
Thank you, councilmember Juarez. Councilmember Pacheco.
Morning. At full council today, we will be voting on a corresponding council bill and clarifile for a contract rezone of 5256 Rainier Avenue South from the Neighborhood Commercial 2 with a 55-foot height limit to a Neighborhood Commercial 2 with a 65-foot height limit. Just wanted to make the announcement of the 24th. We are doing the Seattle 150th anniversary with the Municipal Archives at the Dock. It's a trivia night, and so I hope to see all the different teams and from different offices be able to be there, hopefully, and want to invite the community as well.
Thank you, councilmember Pacheco. Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you so much. There are no items on the full council agenda from the Civil Rights Utilities Economic Development and Arts Committee. We do not have a committee meeting. And just a couple of events to make note of. Before I do that, though, I do want to circulate the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation and make note as well of the events today. There is, as council president Harrell mentioned earlier, celebratory march starting at Westlake Park that goes from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m., ending up here. And then there'll be a celebration in Birth and Night Landis between 11:30 and 1:30 p.m., where the mayor will present this proclamation. And the evening celebration and dinner will be at the Daybreak Star Indian Cultural Center between 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. Other events that I have had last week and coming up this week. On Saturday, I attended a fundraiser for Totem Star at Youngstown Cultural Center. Totem Star is a fantastic organization focused on ensuring that youth have access to— that youth have access to recording space and equipment to engage young people in musical arts. Later that evening, I also attended the West Seattle Helpline Gala Dinner. The West Seattle Helpline is an organization that's focused on ensuring that people get the help they need to prevent homelessness in advance of their situation becoming a crisis situation. Later on this week... Oh, I also want to make mention that I... The Admiral Church in West Seattle is looking at doing a, an affordable housing project. And I participated in a little town hall that they put on to try to engage the community around their plans moving forward. And it was, I think, a really useful first step to get that broader community engaged on the ground floor before anything moves forward. I will be attending this evening's Business Improvement Area Public Safety Forum. And also, we'll be attending Wednesday's Bellwether Housing Closer to Home Luncheon. And Tuesday's, Tuesday's Housing Alliance event. So busy week, and I think that covers it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbolt. Councilmember Beckshaw.
Nice to see everybody. I'm going to stop, start bottom up here. We have a reminder that our second public hearing for our budget is next Tuesday. I know you're already yawning, stop it. Starts at 5:30. And we also, later this week, we'll begin the budget deliberations and issue ID sessions. I also want to acknowledge council central staff. Thank you to all members of the staff. I know Ali and Dan, Ally and Dan were doing tremendous work over the last several weeks. And just, I know for the next five weeks, it's going to be intense for them, so I just want to acknowledge and say thank you. And so the ID sessions gives us an opportunity to talk about our priorities. And thanks to everybody for getting your form A's at 10:10 at 10:00 a.m. Those forms came in, and then central staff begins to get them organized. And I'll be talking with each of you about what your priorities are, so I have an understanding. And there's a lot of intersection around homelessness and the LEAD program and supporting the good work that a number of our entities and organizations are doing. We'll talk a lot more about that. So thank you for everybody being engaged and staying engaged. On today's committee, Finance and Neighborhoods Committee, we have one item that is a collective bargaining agreement that comes directly to council. It did not go through my committee, but I want to thank Karina Bull. Thank you for putting all this together. If this passes, which I assume that it will, it will provide for four years a collective bargaining agreement for three departments: Seattle Public Utilities, Department of Transportation, and Parks and Recreation. So this is certainly not pro forma, but it does come directly to this council, full council this afternoon. If you've got any questions, please let me know beforehand. And I do want to say big thanks to our folks in Belltown. There was, there has been, over the last couple of years, a real effort to make a park at where the Battery Street Tunnel, where it used to go in and come out, Highway 99, before the viaduct came down. We had a great meeting last week. They put, pulled together all of the people that represented the major community organizations there. Marshall Foster, thanks so much for coming, and we really are getting a handle on what's looking forward. One of the items that I'll be bringing forward in the budget, but we have money for it, and I just want to acknowledge the fact that we're looking at $500,000 to really help get the geotech work going on that in line with what Marshall Foster is already doing on Bell Street. So this is a great opportunity, and I do want to say thanks to everybody who participated in that. And then lastly, this is just good news. You know, once in a while, really great things happen. And I want to acknowledge that the work that we've been doing on Yesler Crescent, which is City Hall Park and down Second Avenue, in this last year, Parks has done a tremendous job in making it a more user-friendly place. There are a lot of people who are going, making it more... You know, one of our touchstones is how many women are in that park? Do they feel safe? So great work has been done there, working with Parks and SPU and police about what we're going to do with Prefontaine Fountain across the street. But down on Second Avenue, going south towards the King Street Station, we've made so much progress this year. The Metropole Building, that has been boarded up for over 10 years, has been sold now to the Satterbury Foundation. Forterra will be the project manager, and they're looking at putting childcare in down there. So yay on that. Colleen Echohawk, God bless. Her building, right next to Seattle Center, Lazar Estate Center is coming down in January. There'll be over 80 units of affordable housing there, right around the corner. Peter and Lisa Nitsa have already started pulling down the old building. Another 80 units of housing are starting right now. Ribbon cutting is tomorrow on this, so another 80 units there. And the Cannery Building, that you've heard me fuss about for most of the last couple of years. I've been in touch with the property owner now. He's met with me three times. Last week, we reached out to the Filipino community. We'll have another meeting next week to get their ideas on how their heritage and culture could be honored and with the potential of putting at least another 80 units of housing there. So, you know, in just a year of pushing, 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 we have gotten tremendous work going forward with hundreds of units right down on Second Avenue. So thanks to all of you for helping me and putting up with that. So well done.
Thanks, Councilmember Beckshaw. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. Good morning. I have a very short report. There's nothing on this afternoon's full council agenda from the Gender Equity Save Communities New Americans and Education Committee. Just really quickly, wanted to go over a couple of events that I had the pleasure of participating in last week. On Tuesday, October 8, I and my staff, V Nguyen from my office, and Councilmember Pacheco, and Colleen from his office, went out into community in District 3. We did a walking tour with the Capitol Hill Eco District in sort of a ramp-up in preparation for a budget ad that I'll be advocating for this budget season to provide $150,000 to that community to do some community visioning and planning around how to facilitate the process of making the portions within the Eco District more pedestrian-friendly and more accessible to non-motorized vehicle, but also really focusing on how to transforming, how to transform those public spaces into something that feels safe and livable and sustainable for everyone who wants to use those spaces. So this is a follow-up and a product of the trip that I did to Copenhagen in August. And we are bringing home many of those lessons together with some of the representatives from major institutions in the area who joined us on the walking tour, as well as staff and leaders at Capitol Hill Housing and Capitol Hill Eco District, as well as residents, workers, et cetera, within Capitol Hill, really broad coalition of support to begin the process of not just doing a visioning plan, but of also formulating an implementation plan that could be leveraged and used as a blueprint, if you will, together with relevant agencies at the city to really begin the process of thinking more concretely about how to make the Capitol Hill Eco District both economically viable in the future, but also more accessible to pedestrians. Really excited about having had the opportunity to just walk the streets with these representatives and looking forward to having an ongoing conversation in the context of our budget process this year. On Saturday, and also just huge thanks to Councilmember Pacheco and his office for joining us as well. It was a lot of fun, and I think an hour worth, an hour and a half well-spent. On Saturday, October 12, I had an opportunity to join between 50 and 70 members of the community who are looking at various democracy issues. I want to thank the Fix Democracy First organization who organized the event and had me come out and speak about some of the democracy work that we've done here in the city of Seattle, including honest elections and a bill that I will be advancing with regard to independent expenditures and additional campaign disclosures for next year. So really excited about continuing the education process around that and some advocacy around that, and really appreciative of the fact that I was invited to join this important group of democracy advocates on this last Saturday, October 12. I can't even remember what month it is anymore. That is all I have to report for now, and that'll it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Council President, I forgot just to mention a circulating now, the calendar for this week and our budget deliberation and issue ID. And it was, came to us from Kirsten last Friday. I just want to make sure everybody saw this, starting Wednesday at 9:30, continuing all the way through next Tuesday.
Very good. Thanks for the calendar.
Sorry, one more thing.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Sorry, before we wrap up, I just, I wanted to... I know we were talking about it offline before the cameras turned on, but I just wanted to say congratulations to my good friend and our colleague, Councilmember Teresa Mosqueda and her husband Manuel Valdez, who just received, who just had their first child on October 9. Probably did not feel like just a receipt. And really just want to express our congratulations on behalf of my office, certainly, and I'm sure all of you share this sentiment. Really pleased that it was a healthy delivery and that Mom and Camila are both doing well. So just want to wish them well as they venture down this new path and enjoy the family leave that they have accessible to them. So really excited that we get to add one more person to the city of Seattle family.
You stole my thunder. I was just asking, Councilmember Wares, I couldn't remember the beautiful daughter's name, and Councilmember Wares gave it to me. And I was going to say, thanks for, I wanted to acknowledge that, thanks for doing that, Councilmember Gonzalez. Okay, having said that, and I'm sure both are probably watching us now. So we...
I wouldn't be surprised if she was.
Yes, we love you both. Love you both. Okay, as Presiding Officer, I'm announcing that the Seattle City Council will now convene in executive session. And the purpose of the executive session is to discuss pending potential or actual litigation. This gives us an opportunity to discuss confidential legal matters with our city attorneys as authorized by law.